Item number two is the Neighborhood Council Review Commission and CLA reports relative to the NCRC's final report regarding the role and responsibilities of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment.
Okay.
Item number two.
Do we have any presentation on this, or anybody want to say anything? Okay.
I can give you the CLA's recommendation. Here we're instructing, actually Dunn has requested 90 days to report back to the Education Neighborhood Committee with a descriptive plan. The city attorney advises that this recommendation may require both NC ordinance and NC plan modification.
Okay.
And Dunn supports clarifying the role of BONC.
So what should we do?
We should instruct Dunn to prepare an implementation plan.
Okay.
Including grievance procedures.
Okay.
And submit the report to the Education Neighborhood Committee within 90 days for consideration.
Okay, we'll do that. And I, oh, okay. Would you like to say something?
Bong Lin Kim, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and we would concur with the recommendation that we come back to you with a report outlining what our implementation is. There is another recommendation in terms of shifting Dunn's role to focus on capacity building, organizing, engaging, civic engagement, and so I think those two recommendations would work together.
Okay, good. And of course, you know, for me, and I know I stated it last time, that I've always felt that the purpose of the department was to really empower, nurture, support, work together with, be the advocate for, be the department that is the advocate with all other departments, and be the department that's the advocate with the city council. I mean, it's your department that is there for one purpose and one purpose only, really, and that's to see how we can really set neighborhood councils free to do what they were intended to do, so hopefully that will be reflected.
This will be included in our report, but the Empowerment Academy is going to be rebranded to be named the Carol Baker Tharp Neighborhood Leadership Institute.
Oh, wonderful.
And our aspirations are to make that the best leadership institute of its kind in the country.
Oh, that's great.
To remember our former GM Carol Baker Tharp.
That's great, that's fabulous, wonderful. Okay, we do have a comment on item two, Jim McQuiston. Okay, Jim.
Jim McQuiston, I've submitted a statement on this. I just want to say that, reiterating my point, that the commission really got off the track, and your comment that Dunn should be doing what we intended in the first place is well taken.
Thank you very much.
And there's no reason why they can't do it without any city council involvement at all. It's up to the mayor, really, to get busy and-
Oh, we don't want to hear that. You're talking to the wrong people when you say that. We want to be involved.
The city council can be involved. They have to be involved because they're supposed to be noticing neighborhood councils in time that they can take some action, and with a 72-hour notice, that doesn't quite fit the bill. However, neighborhood councils should take it upon themselves to find out what's going on, rather than just sitting around and waiting for somebody to force-feed them, too.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, any comments, Mr. Zine?
Nope.
Okay, so with that, we'll instruct Dunn to prepare the implementation plan and report back to us in 90 days.
Item number three is the Neighborhood, NCRC and CLA report relative to recommendation 21 regarding requesting the city to consider the budget implications of Dunn providing technical assistance to neighborhood councils, including outreach, office-based location accounting, clerical service, and other items, as well as the technical upgrades needed to reach large constituency of neighborhood councils. The city attorney says that no neighborhood council ordinance or neighborhood council plan amendments are required, and this recommendation is consistent with city policy and practices. Dunn's expenditure for these purposes is considered as part of the city's annual budget process. We're recommending that Dunn include such expenditure requests as part of the city's annual budget process.
Right, okay. Councilmember Zine?
And is there a review of that somewhere?
What do you mean?
Is there an audit or some review following that? Expenditure requests as part of the city's annual budget, does someone verify it, or is it just accepted at face value?
Bong Lin Kim, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, my understanding is that this would be a part of the budget process, where we would lay out our scope of work and our priorities, and present that to the mayor and the council office.
Right, so it would be up to us to review it and ask questions on that, whether we want to approve that.
Correct.
That's fine.
Okay. We have a speaker card on this, Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, I have put in a statement on these two. This doesn't require any specific acts by the city council, and normally, if Dunn proposes to expand city funds, why, the Budget Finance Committee will look at those. So it's really, I must say, an exhibition of ignorance by the review commission, that they don't understand the budget process, when one of the items in the charter says that they're supposed to be looking at the budget, and therefore, they wouldn't know better than to put this in in the first place.
What do you have to say for yourself? Okay, any more questions? Okay, so obviously, you're going to just include your request as part of the city's annual budget. Okay.
Item number four is the Neighborhood Council Review Commission and CLA reports relative to the NCRC recommendation number 32 regarding appointment and selection of members of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. The NCR recommends that the mayor to continue to appoint and remove members of BONC, subject to council confirmation. Recommendation number 32 also stipulates that the mayor will remove commissioners at will. The recommendation further states that at least four of the commissioners must be current or former members of a neighborhood council board. The mayor shall seek input from neighborhood councils during the process of nominating commissioners. This may include stakeholders who are and are not associated with neighborhood councils. The NCR recommends that BONC continue to be appointed by the mayor, but their membership will be fully representative of every part of the city. The city attorney advised that the charter change could be necessary for the bracketed language. The city attorney advised that the language in the brackets appear to dictate to the mayor how BONC appointments must be made, which are in conflict with the charter.
All right.
We're recommending that the first two sentences of the recommendation simply be approved, and the bracketed language be deleted.
So the bracketed language is-
Just for clarification, there's no bracketed language, Gwen Poindexter City Attorney, there's no bracketed language in the NCRC recommendations. The city attorney's office just identified the language for the CLA's purposes-
Which is bracketed.
-in brackets. So the language that the city, we feel that would require a charter change is that language which-
So the recommendation that the mayor continue to appoint and remove is status quo.
Correct.
And the mayor can remove commissioners at will is-
Is basically fine, correct.
The part that you think needs a charter change is the recommendation that states at least four of the commissioners must be current or former members of a neighborhood council board. The mayor shall seek input from neighborhood councils during the process of nominating commissioners. This may include stakeholders who are or are not associated with the neighborhood council, that part.
Absolutely correct.
Rafe Sunnenschein, Executive Director, Neighborhood Council Review Commission, since we consider this an important recommendation, we'd want to make sure that we're absolutely certain that a charter amendment would be required, and I wonder if we could have the opportunity, this is the first, I hadn't heard that before, and I don't doubt the analysis, but I would like to have us have an opportunity to review that with the city attorney before you delete that from here, and if it is to be a charter amendment, if there is some way that some portion of this can be salvaged, we'd like to have the opportunity to see if we can do that before this takes-
Okay, why don't you talk to us a little bit about what your thinking was? What's the thinking on that?
Well, our thinking was that we have really changed the role of BONC considerably, to have a policymaking role and also something of an adjudicatory role. And as you know, there's been a certain amount of tension-
It's always my idea.
There you go.
It didn't have to be changed, that was always what I thought BONC should be.
Well, there it is, we just aligned it. And there's been some tension between the commission and some of the neighborhood councils in terms of this process. We have a much improved self-governing process for complaints that's going to involve BONC and neighborhood councils, and we thought it was important that it be written in, that the neighborhood councils have a role in the selection of BONC commissioners, and that BONC commissioners have a connection, not all of them, by any means, have some connection to the neighborhood council system. That's going to be important, because they're going to be making, in a sense, tougher decisions now than they have previously. Things will be brought to them that normally might have found their way, even to the city council, are now going to end up in their hands. So we'd like to see if there's a way to save some of this language, but I understand that it's perfectly possible that that might not be possible, but this is the first I had heard about taking this out, so.
And you probably remember, and I remember during the charter reform process, I don't remember about your commission, but our commission-
The elected commission.
The elected, the people's commission.
The elected.
Really, we wanted to have language in the city charter about all commissioners being appointed by the mayor, and we were very interested in the idea of geography, gender, you know, a lot of that, and we wanted that. We were told at that point that we could not, you could not limit the mayor's choices. You could put suggestive language in the charter recommending that the mayor, you know, take into account, you know, gender, geographical representation. However, we did, on two commissions, the airport commission and the harbor commission, we specifically designated that on the harbor, one person would be local-
Correct.
And on the airport, two, one representing Van Nuys area, we were very specific-
Yes.
And one representing the LAX area. Would you care to opine on that?
Well, I don't know what was said, or what the advice was at the charter commission, but that analysis is similar to the analysis we conclude here, is that the charter dictates what the rules are.
Yeah.
And yes, you can have limitations, as long as they're specifically in the charter, and the problem with this recommendation is that it dictates to the mayor, well, it basically limits his pool of appointees, when the charter basically allows him to appoint anybody he wishes under the BONC, subject to what's already written in the charter, which is geographic diversity and the diversity that's in a 501E.
And we have, and those are just suggestions? How are they? How does that, what does it say?
The language in the charter basically says that the mayor shall strive-
Right.
-to make his or her or all appointments in consideration to these communities of interest, neighborhoods, et cetera.
Okay.
So to answer Dr. Sunnenschein's question, certainly, the city council could suggest to the mayor, as part of this process, that we would hope that you would consider appointing some of the BONC members from former or current neighborhood council board members, but the legal analysis that the city council can't mandate either by motion or by ordinance, unless there's amendment to the charter that otherwise would put that in the charter.
Okay.
We're happy to report back in writing on that, but, you know, our office has already vetted this among our-
Yeah, and so we couldn't make a change to the plan?
Correct.
The neighborhood council plan?
Correct, right, because that would be in conflict with the powers that are already set forth in the charter.
Okay.
But would it be possible, if I could ask, to amend the plan-
Yeah.
-in a suggestive direction that is more elaborate than what's currently in the charter, if we could maintain the spirit of some of these, in terms of, these should be taken into account, but not make it mandatory? That would not violate the charter, is that right?
No, you could probably do it in a suggestive way, just understanding that it doesn't have any force-
We could put, really strive.
Yeah, like, really, really.
Yeah, okay, well-
Talk about that language.
So, yeah, so you want to talk about that? So you want to hold this?
Sure, we can report back.
Instead of receive and file the bracketed, why don't we hold the bracketed language? Or just this whole, how about this whole recommendation? Would you feel comfortable holding the recommendations to talk about?
Yes, because the first two sentences are current law anyway.
Our status quo.
So they're really no different.
Okay, so why don't we just table this recommendation, and you guys can see if you can work out something that makes it a little stronger, a little more suggestive, a little more striving.
We would like to strive, thank you.
Okay. I do have a, Mr. McQuiston?
How about that?
How about that?
Jim McQuiston, I concur with the city attorney that it's not proper, and there would probably be a civil rights suit on it besides, so we don't want to get, speaking as the sixth member of the Budget Finance Committee, we're trying to cut down on litigation.
That's funny.
But one thing that we are concerned about is that the charter has been contravened by the plan, and we do want to seek to try to get it back to where the elected charter commission really, their thinking. Now, since that was not in the voter pamphlet, we cannot go beyond the voter pamphlet as far as what the elected charter commission really meant by that, because most of the words are very plain, and there have been some Supreme Court decisions that say, you know, you can't go beyond the plain language. So I am concerned about this idea, because what we wanted with the original idea was that this would be a watchdog type of agency, plus suggestions for the people, so that the city would run smoother. And the problem is, if it's a watchdog agency, you don't appoint the fox to watch over the chickens. So even though you might say the neighborhood council members actually have some experience, it's not a good idea to have them supervising other neighborhood councils, because then everyone else thinks it's a closed system. So I did want to bring that point out, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other items, I mean, any members of the public wish to speak? No? Okay, so we'll hold this on the table. And for full disclosure, Daryl is also waiting for a call. He is a grandfather in waiting, any moment. So this is all very exciting.
Neighbor Council Review Commission and CLA reports relative to NCRC recommendation number 32 regarding the appointment and selection of members of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
No, we just did that. We know you're distracted, we're on five.
I'm sorry. Forgive me, I'm sorry. This is regarding recommendation number 39 regarding Dunn's undertaking a two-year project with the neighborhood councils to develop more consistent bylaws.
Okay.
According to the city attorney, no NCA ordinance or NCA plan amendments to implement them are recommended. Dunn concurs with this recommendation, and has started to implement some of these recommendations. BONC supports the standardization of neighborhood council election rules and bylaws. We're instructing, we recommend that you instruct Dunn to report back at the conclusion that the bylaws modification project, when it's finished.
Okay, I think we have some members of, does anybody from the department or the commission want to speak on this? Okay, it's pretty straight, do you want to say something?
Mark Lewis, Director of Field Operations, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, we've already created the template, and some template language with help from the city attorney's office, and we've even had a workshop at the previous Congress of Neighborhoods, and now we're going forward with a plan to, we've worked with individual neighborhood councils to implement it, but now we're going to go forward and present the information to all the neighborhood councils, and encourage them as strongly as we can to utilize the template.
This talks about neighborhood councils are encouraged to identify a bylaw volunteer.
That would be our liaison, that we work with the individual to utilize the template. What the template does, it places in logical order the components of a bylaws, and for example, there's six articles, one through five, and they each are in major components.
Now, of course, it's always, you know, I always wonder about, everybody's a volunteer anyway, but I always wonder about designating a specific volunteer for any number of projects, because what happens if that volunteer is not there anymore, or, you know?
Well, we would request a volunteer from the neighborhood council, and if that volunteer is no longer available, we would request-
Just another one.
Absolutely.
And are we having, has that started? Are we beginning to have them identify volunteer bylaw people?
We've been working with individual neighborhood councils and the bylaws committee, those individuals, we've been working with them to use the template, but when we go forward on the macro level, so to speak, then we'll ask for those volunteers, similar to other liaisons-
Right.
...which we ask for with the groups that work with the city attorney's office and that type of thing.
Okay.
Rafe Sunnenschein, Executive Director, Neighborhood Council Review Commission, just to build on what Mark is saying, they've already gone right down the road that we had recommended, which is really great. We were very careful not to put a mandate on neighborhood councils, that every single one of them had to find a volunteer-
Right.
-who would constantly be available.
Right.
So the way this is written, it's to encourage them to identify a bylaws volunteer, and our other goal of this was to not mire them in another bored process of bylaws revision, and we figured that every neighborhood council could find one person who likes bylaws. But if they don't, then Dunn can go ahead with this process, even without a bylaws volunteer.
Without, okay, all right.
And actually, we're doing the bulk of the work. We've already determined that we would arrange their bylaws, and actually just ask them to approve of it. We wouldn't change any language, it would just be the order.
Okay. And I tell you what's intriguing to me, though, is the goal of developing bylaws that leave room for creative decisions about governance, while developing recognizable comparable terms, structures, and definitions. That's going to be interesting.
We wanted to give them the opportunity to have individuality in certain structures that they would do, but one of the problems that we all found, that Dunn found, and we found, is that the bylaws can't talk to each other. They're not using common terms, they're not using common structures, and it's very, very difficult, as they're discovering and we discovered, to make sense of all the bylaws as a body. But once they're consistent, then they can innovate, and they can do all kinds of structural things that, right now, might be a little harder to do.
And we anticipated the possibility of the city clerk taking over the elections, because Article II specifically addresses election and selection, and we only have the article and no section, so the city clerk can also work with it as well.
And what's the timeline on this?
The next fiscal year, to hopefully have as many neighborhood councils as possible utilizing this, but it is voluntary, so I have personally not have heard anyone make complaints, even including the working groups at the Congress, when there was over 40 people who were there, and no one complained about the logical order of this.
Okay, good.
It's great progress.
Okay, good. I have some people who would like to speak on this, Pat Nave, Jeff Jacobberger, and Jim McQuiston.
Good afternoon, nice to see you, Pat Nave.
Nice to see you.
I don't speak for anybody but myself, but I've been involved in some bylaws drafting and so forth. I was very pleased to hear Councilman Zine talk about the people's commission, because I think that that was a really important aspect of it, because it recognized the people's right and ability and willingness to participate in their government, and to participate to some degree in self-governance, and for the most part, certainly, I think in the area in which I live, it's been productive and fruitful and helpful to the city as a whole. What, and I'm also glad to hear you talk about innovative aspect of things. I think it's not the role of government to make things easier for themselves, and to then make it harder on its citizens. So, you know, if it's, it's nice to have a template out there, but it seems to me it ought to be suggestive, and as long as what a neighborhood council is doing is legal, then I think it fits the requirements of Section 904-F, let them do it. It's nice to have somebody, it's nice to have it as a resource, it's nice to know what other neighborhood councils are doing, but at the same time, you've got to trust your people, and if the people in an area say, this is what we want, then it ought to be okay with Dunn, and with BONC, and with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeff Jacobberger. I was a member of the NCRC, but I'm just speaking on my own behalf this afternoon. I was actually one who, you know, advocated truly uniform bylaws, other than things like, you know, board size, board composition committees, the things that truly need to be different, to reflect different neighborhoods. I think one of the things that gets missed is, a lot of people in Los Angeles move, and so people live in different neighborhood councils at different periods, and when, to the extent that people want to be involved in their community and their neighborhood councils, when the rules are very different, it makes it harder for people to participate, not easier. And I think that's, you know, I think the reality is, is most of the people who participate in neighborhood councils are people who have been in their community for a very long time, but I think sometimes the interests of newer members, younger people who move around a lot, are sometimes forgotten. And I think also, you know, when we're talking about uniform bylaws, we're generally talking about the completely non-controversial portions of bylaws. For example, like, why should 88 neighborhood councils have different nondiscrimination clauses?
All right.
They should all be the same, and it should be whatever the city's nondiscrimination policy is.
All right.
You know, conflict of interest provisions, there's no reason, you know, that I can think of, why all those sorts of provisions should be any different among neighborhood councils. And I think, you know, as a commission, those were the kinds of things we were aiming at uniformity on, you know, the strictly kind of procedural parts that don't really affect the work of neighborhood councils, but absolutely to give neighborhood councils a great deal of flexibility on, you know, board size composition, whether to hold meetings and make decisions through town halls, that sort of thing.
Right, okay, good, thank you.
Jim McQuiston, I have a statement on that, which is in the file. I would certainly agree with Mr. Nave. I know that he and I, and you and Mr. Zine, and a few other people who have been on the city council, labored hard over these things. And the people that say they wanted to change, I always think, well, you know, why didn't you come to those meetings and give that opinion then, rather than make all this work and then want to do it differently now? The problem is, of course, we want to encourage people to be creative. If we have too many rules, they say, this is a bureaucracy, I don't want anything to do with it. There is a big PR problem here. As far as Mr. Jacobberger's idea there, that people do move around, that's true, and even newcomers have a hard time breaking into neighborhood councils, because people don't know whether they really are for them or against them, and they just really suppress them. But that's a different matter. Anybody who comes into a neighborhood council ought to read the bylaws and find out what's what in this neighborhood. So I can't really say that just because the bylaws are different, you have to make them all uniform, just because people move around. I think, on balance, Mr. Nave's idea is the one that the commission came up with, and I really support that particular idea. I think that we have really had many, many, and I can remember many, many people, firecrackers- in their neighborhood who have given up on neighborhood councils, and I, I'm very distressed about that.
Thank you. And one more, last but not least, Diana Nave.
Thank you. I actually came to speak on item one and was going to say this as, as part of it, but I think it's really relevant now. The concern that we, our neighborhood council actually supports the idea of all neighborhood councils having the same order in headings. We think that's great, but we're very concerned about templates. And our concern about templates comes from our experience with the elections template. And I want to give you one example. We were told that those unique things that were unique to our council would not be lost. As we were sitting there reviewing the template as it got finalized for, for the last elections, we're looking forward to this one, we realized that there were things that were lost. One example was, we had a provision that we put in there at the suggestion of the IEA, the Independent Election Administrator, that if somebody had used funds other than their own on their publicity materials, that they would have to declare who paid for those materials.
Right.
We thought that was great, we put it in our, in our procedures.
Right.
It got lost when we used the template. So I am very concerned about how it gets implemented, and I was very concerned when I heard the recommendation, if I understood it right, that the report back be basically after it's all done. I mean, I think that if, if we're looking at anything other than just putting them all in the same order, we may find a lot of resistance.
Yeah.
Ms. Hahn.
Yes.
In thinking about what she just said, the CLA's office would like to recommend that, that Dunn report back in ninety days on the status of the bylaw modification project, so we'd be able to monitor what's going on, and continue to even after that.
Right.
Would she be-
Right, also, it seems to me, with the idea of a person in each neighborhood council working very closely, it seems to me that would be your link to make sure that you're, you know, you get in there what you want to get in there, or if you have issues, you know, you can bring them forward quickly and we can deal with them. So, just, yeah, I, I think what's important, I think what's incumbent upon each neighborhood council is to-
Carefully monitor.
Carefully monitor the process. Because I think what happened with the elections was some people weren't looking at it until it was all done, so.
Particularly after we were told-
Right.
-that that language wouldn't be lost, they would do it for us.
Right.
They did it, we had to have the election-
Right.
-and it was all on this very tight timeline-
Right.
-and there really wasn't the opportunity to spend the time reviewing it that maybe should have been, so.
Right.
The election, the bylaws at least doesn't have that same timeline-
Right.
-in it that you do when you're holding an election-
Right.
-and you're told it has to be tomorrow.
Right, right, exactly. All right, well, let's, I, I agree with you, let's, let's not wait till it's all said and done before we approve it.
Okay, thank you. We can move on now to item number one, which is an oral presentation by the city clerk relative to the status report on the conduct, on conducting a neighborhood council elections.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Frank Marchant.
Yes, Los Angeles City Clerk.
I'm getting all sorts of calls today about polling places, problems everywhere, but it's not your problem.
Not, not today.
Not today.
Although, my election division is supporting the county today. We're staffing a phone bank, we have people working as poll workers.
If people are having problems, I've been directing them to the counties.
That's correct.
Okay.
For polling place operations.
Right. Okay.
Okay, well, we've been at this a little over a month, so let me kind of bring you up to date on what we've done, where we're at.
Okay.
In January, we held a series of informational meetings throughout the city, a series of six, with Dunn and ourselves, city clerk, election staff as well, informing neighborhood councils of the, of the process and what we'd be going through. And I think those meetings were very successful in getting the basic information out, asking, answering a lot of questions that people had about how this process would work. And let me just reiterate the three categories-
Right.
-that people fall into.
Right.
So you have the people that were already well into their elections. In other words-
Right.
-council took this action in December, there were people who had elections scheduled in January-
Right.
-through March.
Right.
Working with Dunn, we decided, "Let's let those elections go ahead so we won't be disruptive-"
Right.
"-and get in their way."
So they're all going ahead.
They're going ahead.
How many of those are there?
There's fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we have the group, April to June-
Right.
-which we were going to do, and right now, we have twenty-two of those identified, plus two more that we're working with to see if, if we're actually going to do those or not, so twenty-two to twenty-four there. And some of those involve groups that moved up their elections, that were scheduled later, that wanted us to do them, so they, they moved it up.
Okay.
Nonetheless, so we're doing about twenty-two, maybe twenty-four, and we're going to do those all in June, and we're going to do them, this is a very, very tentative math, but you could see what we would do. We'd take the twenty-two, break them up kind of geographically as best we could, and then hold three election days, and-
Okay.
-so we could for, focus our resources, okay?
So you'll just tell them which days they're going to-
Well, we're going to, we're going to meet with the group-
Okay.
-and say, "Okay, given your area and your history and when you've been holding elections, what would be the best day to do it? Try to come up with a consensus, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, work through that, and, and establish a day." Once you have a day, of course, then everything drives towards that day.
Right.
So, that's the group we're working with. And then there's the group that had elections scheduled between July first of oh eight through December thirty-first of oh eight.
Right.
That, those groups actually had three things they could do, right? Per the council's direction. They could go ahead and have their elections and have Dunn do them under the old way-
Right.
-right? They could extend their terms until two-ten, until we come around and do them.
Right.
Or they could move their elections up and have us do them-
In ten.
-in June.
Right.
And a few, a handful did that, and so the way that's breaking out so far, I think there's a few that are still in the final decision-making, is, it looks like about thirty-three will go ahead and have their elections, and it looks like about eighteen have-
Moved it up.
-have, have extended it to oh-ten.
Okay.
So far.
So, and of those thirty-three, that's going to be run by Dunn?
With independent election administrators-
Okay.
-under the old, old way. Then January one of oh nine, that's it. There's no more elections until oh-ten. And the summer of oh nine, after we're done with the municipal elections, then we start gearing up and working with them, and we'll do all-
But you won't have any elections until?
Till-
Oh, till ten?
April, May, June of oh-ten.
Of oh-ten, okay.
And we'll be doing all ninety, or however many neighborhood councils there are at that point. So that's kind of, kind of the macro view. Some other key points, we, we have already hired our lead team. It involved moving two people over, existing staff, and hiring three new folks. And then, of course, we'll have the rest of the election division available to assist as well, and then we also have funds to bring on as-needed people. When we get real close to the election, they'll be helping us staff the polling places and all of that. We are right now working with the Dunn project coordinators and individual neighborhood councils to complete the election procedures for each neighborhood council, which involves dropping in their unique board structure, their boundaries, their, and so forth, minimum voting age, whatever they have that, that's unique to their. The previous comment about campaign finance, we have a section on campaigning, but it does not address some of these nuances there, so that's something we'll probably have to take a look at, and probably need to look at that on, at a macro level, too, because, you know, we tend, in the city's process, campaign, financing, and all of that is one
Right.
-operation, and we're another operation here.
Right.
We don't have an ethics commission-
Right.
-sitting there doing this kind of stuff, so that's something we'll, we'll need to look at. And we're getting feedback from people-
Right.
-on ways that we might-
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, that's significant, and that's a significant issue of concern, I think, with, with some council members, whether it had to do with the council files or whatever, it's just this sense, this disclosure, in terms of any outside groups lobbying or paying for, I'm surprised that doesn't fall under some other conflict of interest ordinance for neighborhood councils, but anyway.
But we'll take a look at that-
Yeah, take a look at that.
-and see if that's something that, that we should just go ahead and put in there now.
Yeah.
I think the other thing to realize, too, is, you know, this was, I, I'm sure everybody feels a little rushed, I mean, you know, with this thing happened in December, we're, we're already well into the process-
Right.
-and we're going to learn a lot this first time out, I'm sure, and hopefully that will help us when we go to do, you know, all ninety later. So in terms of what's ahead of us, that in February, finalizing the procedures, establishing the election day for each of these three regions, and then we start into the process, the mass mailing that goes out, candidate filing process will start, the vote-by-mail process, you know, stakeholder meetings, and everything that we work up to election day. We will have two candidate forums, or candidate workshops, if you will, in each neighborhood council, in their neighborhood council, so people can sign up to be candidates and stuff. We'll do two official mass mailings from the city clerk, official mailings. Dunn and the neighborhood councils, of course, will continue to work on outreach and participation building. Once we have the candidates, you know, we do the ballot, put the ballot together, and prepare for the actual election. So that's the process we're in. I think it's going as well as can be expected. I think we've had a lot of positive feedback in terms of, you know, getting these procedures just done, put them together, sit down, and not spend months and months, you know, back and forth and all of that, driving towards a regional election day for an area, and hopefully, what we hope to do is utilize all the city resources in that area. So there's parks, there's libraries, there's council offices, there's a lot of city presence in each, you know-
Yeah.
-neighbor area. So in terms of outreach, in terms of flyers, in terms of having things in, in those offices reminding people of the upcoming election. And then as we get even closer, I would hope, you know, that we could get the council offices in the area and the mayor's reps in the area to, you know, have a press conference, say, "Neighborhood council elections are coming up in this region," and, you know, kind of build that kind of excitement and anticipation, so. That's kind of, kind of where we're at right now. I mean, we're in the nuts and bolts of getting the procedures done and getting them ready, and, and then moving into the next phase.
Um, once you get all the, because you already have the information on the January through the March, and sounds like the June, but the fall ones are still a little up in there.
I think there's a couple that are still debating that issue of extension versus-
I know, yeah, I would like, I would like to have, if you've got that in some kind of a chart, the neighborhood councils and where they're all fitting in this year-
Okay.
-or next, or two-ten.
Yeah, just lay it all out.
I need, yeah, I'd like to, I would love to see that. That would be really helpful to me as I go through and try to answer questions that people have, and that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds good. And, you know, and just let me say, you know, this, this, of course, was one of the key recommendations from the nine-twelve commission, it's kind of like the cornerstone of everything else. Actually, it was something I suggested a long time ago, I, I know there's some controversy over, but I always thought, "Hey, we have a city clerk, they do elections, they know how to do it." It's, you know, that's your, your job, your mission, and Dunn, that was never what, what I intended for Dunn to spend so much of its time on, was the election. So it was really something that I had suggested. I'm glad it became a key recommendation from the commission. I know there's, change is always difficult, and as you said, it happened quickly, but I actually think this compromise year is fascinating.
Yeah, a little different.
But, you know, I, I, actually, I appreciate that about us, that we were able to figure out how to, how to work out a compromise for oh-eight. And I, and I think, again, that sends a message to neighborhood councils, again, that, you know, we're moving towards a, a change, but, you know, we certainly don't want to, you know, create some situation where, where people are unduly unhappy or feeling like it's being forced on them.
Well, that was the, the January-March decision.
Right.
I mean, they were so far into it-
Exactly.
-for us to step in at that point-
Right.
-would have just been really counter.
But again, this, for all the duties, roles, and responsibilities of Dunn, this was key, that this was not any longer in their purview, so I, I completely support this, and we'll, hopefully we'll just work with everybody to make it as painless as possible.
Yeah, I, I mean, our hope is that it becomes the election administrator-
Yeah, it's background music.
Routine.
Right.
You know, that's not the focus, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I know, I can see you shaking your head, Pat, but that's how I feel.
Okay.
Yeah, not, it doesn't diminish the people who are running, it doesn't diminish the roles that the, the electeds have in the neighborhood councils, but the actual process, I, I think, I would like to see, again, just as routine. We got probably more complaints in this committee and more grievances about the elections than almost anything. People being so unhappy and so miserable, and a lot of the people that left the neighborhood councils, it was over elections.
Yeah.
And that shouldn't be-
Well, you can get caught up in winning, too, just the whole-
Yes.
-you know, elections by their nature.
Right.
Bring out the worst sometimes.
Right, exactly.
In people, not the worst.
And it is election day today in the city of Los Angeles. Okay, we have on this item Diana Nave, Pat Nave, this one doesn't have a name.
George Thompson.
Oh, okay, George Thompson. You put subject one under name.
The left.
Okay, you three, come on up, or two at a time, whatever.
Thank you. Now, we are one of that, that second group, and we will actually be submitting a formal request, I think, after our board meeting next Monday, to move to the third group, which would put us consistent with the other two San Pedro neighborhood councils. We have a lot of concerns about the specifics, and of course, have not had the opportunity to have anyone to meet with specifically on this. What we have seen is, you know, we spend a lot of time upfront trying to figure out this grassroots democracy and what would work. And we came up with ideas we thought were really great-
Right.
-around the election and around having a stakeholders, an annual meeting where we had the stakeholders there, we gave them an annual report, we gave them a budget, we asked for their feedback on what we were doing, they heard all the candidates speak, and then they voted. Because we wanted there to be a connection between-
Right.
-who you're voting for in the vote. That we didn't, wanted to not be like, you know, the judges where you have no idea what you're voting on, and unless you see the bar, or, you know, it's really hard. And so we really wanted that personal piece.
And is that exempt from this process?
Well, this is the piece I'm concerned about, and, and I think the thing that's caused us among, the, the thing that's caused us the most concern in our elections committee discussions, is that when we went to the presentation about the elections, we were told that the voting by mail would be optional. When we got the template, it said, it mandated it. And we're very concerned about that provision. We spent time upfront, we met, we actually met with the city clerk upfront when we developed our elections procedures, and made a very conscious decision that we did not want that to be mandatory. And because of this grassroots nature, and because of the participatory democracy, we thought people really needed to know who they were voting for.
Yeah.
And so we're very concerned about that. We're also very concerned about the cost of that at the time when the city has a lot of other problems financially. So we're really wondering, you know, if the cost is worth it, and what it does to the grassroots nature of neighborhood councils. We think it opens the door to a lot more abuse, and really takes away from the participatory nature of, of democracy. So that's our concern.
Okay.
Our biggest concern.
Okay, thank you.
My name is George Thompson with the North West Neighborhood Council, and I specifically looked at the template for the election procedures. Among some of the questions I have were the following. There was no provision made in there for candidate statements. I heard you reference just now to a candidate's, public candidate forum, but honestly, I could not find that in the, in, in the procedures as I read them. There was no definition of the process by which we would certify candidates, and how that fitted in the timeline. We took, maybe it's just in our case, but we really took exception to having tie votes[1750.63] We took, maybe it's just in our case, but we really took exception to having tie votes decided by a coin toss. We said, wait a minute, you know, that's, we never provided for that. We don't, that's not the way we, we wanted to do it. How do we contend with the fact that some of the provisions within the template don't seem to agree with what the things we thought were the, and worked well for us in the past? To whom are mass mailings addressed? What list are we going to use? And would that list encompass multiple families living in the same house? Will it encompass youths who we allow to vote at age sixteen and above? Are they going to be addressed by these mass mailings? It left us confused. We had a mass handout, we did a walking man handout in our elections and that's how we got the word out. How are mailings to stakeholders? We reconcile with those who will not be on any mailing list from the city clerk, such as the eligible youth, business organizations. What is the procedure the clerk is going to use for self-affirmation? We were fortunate in that we have self-affirmation taking place at our elections. Some of our governing board members or volunteers are, have been with the city post office, I'm with the post office department and we recognize right away this address is not good or this address is good, where does this organization exist? We try to provide for that. We have been previously meeting with the city clerk's office and I realize they're on a heck of a schedule, but we have yet, if our elections come off in June, to receive any notice as to when that meeting's going to take place. It's our belief that the city clerk is going to find it difficult to operate neighborhood council elections by the end of the second quarter in two thousand eight. And if we do this in haste, we are afraid that we will end up having some of the carefully thought out procedures that we've arrived at circumvented. And we have conducted six unchallenged successful elections in Northwest Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to, I would like for you to maybe answer some of these, so we can get a better clarification.
First of all, let me start with vote by mail. It was the strong, I think, belief and feeling from the Neighborhood Council Review Commission that we should offer as much avenues for participation as possible. And therefore, we committed upfront with them that we would offer a vote by mail option to any voter who could not come to election day, which is what we do in city elections as well. And we further committed that whatever level of stakeholder documentation, et cetera, was required at the poll, we would make that required of a vote by mail voter as well. So I'm clearly...
It's not mandated, I mean...
No, we're offering it.
You're offering it, it's not...
So, so it's mandated in the sense that it's a mandatory option available to the voter and a voter doesn't have to vote by mail, of course.
Is that cleared up a little bit?
It's, it's optional for the voter, it's not optional for the neighborhood council.
Oh, so if you don't want anybody to vote by mail?
We don't want to have a vote by mail option.
Oh, okay.
Which is what we had...
And our view...
Decided upon.
I see.
And our concerns around vote by mail or having a vote by mail option. I think for those neighborhood councils who want it, fine, great, but we had chosen not to have a vote by mail option.
I see.
And we're very concerned about it for the reasons I stated.
Okay.
So our approach to doing a vote by mail option, of course, would be that the individual voter would have to apply with us, to us.
Right.
On a form, you know, with the information that we require.
Right.
And again, if, if that neighborhood council demands documentation at the polling place to vote, like ID or whatever they require.
Right.
We would demand the same thing from the vote by mail voter. So you have to weigh access and opportunity versus potential for abuse.
Right.
Which is what you do in all election procedures. So, you know, I think we, we can design a vote by mail process that we think is fairly Is it, is there a potential for abuse? I suppose there is, just like someone could come to a poll with fake ID. Now, if you're going to go to that level, I suppose that you could. But again, it's balancing access because there are homebound, there are people that are going to be out of town that day, there are people that are not going to be able to participate in the election. And that's why you offer them this other alternative.
So you don't have, you didn't, you all didn't have any provision for people who were just physically unable to?
The only provision we had was that we did, you could do what's called drive by mail, you could drive by vote, you could come in the car and we'd carry a ballot out. I mean, I didn't get to vote in our last election because I was out of the country.
Right.
But, and I did vote in the school board election, et cetera.
Yeah.
But in an election where you've really got so few people that really know, you know, you're not, it's not like a big election, you know, people just aren't paying attention. And so I think it's a little different dynamics.
Yeah, but we want them to pay, we want more people to pay attention.
We would like them to, we would love them to be attentive, but we want them to know what they're voting for.
Right.
And one of the provisions we read in there was that you, it sounded like you would just take stacks of absentee ballots and make them available places for people to go, applications, not ballots, and make them available for people to pick up. Well, what's to prevent me from going and getting a whole stack of those and taking them, you know, you know, we had people from Orange County voting in our election, so we, you know, we think about that. What's, what's to, what's to say?
Well, they do, they are going to hate...
What kind of control is there on, on these applications?
Applications should be widely available. Once they turn them into us with the proper documentation and the proper vetting that we go through, then the ballot itself becomes very between us and the voter.
Right.
Those are not widely available.
Right.
So applications are widely available, ballots are not. I mean, that's, that's the demarcation point with vote by mail.
I do want to ask about one other thing you said because it's not what we read in the template. My understanding of the template, and I may have missed it, but my understanding of the template was that this year, you had to use self-affirmation, you were not going to use any ID, et cetera.
No, that is not correct. What the, what we committed to do was that we would use, we would follow the procedure that the neighborhood council had been using relative to a self-affirmation type of process versus a documentation process in terms of voter participation. There is this new stakeholder category, right?
I understand that.
Okay, which is a separate issue. It gets confused sometimes because people say, well, they're self-affirming, they have a stake in the neighborhood. That's one issue.
Right.
Second issue is what kind of documentation, if any, people require to vote, okay? So we are going to, for this first round, we are going to follow whatever the council's been doing. So if they've been requiring documentation, we will require documentation. It will be fairly administered in an objective way, but we will require the documentation. If they've been using self-affirmation already, then we will use self-affirmation. And then whatever's used at the poll, whatever the standard is at the poll, it'll be the same standard for the vote by mail. Now, candidates, gentlemen raised the issue about candidate verification. Candidates, we believe, just like candidates in other elections, is going to be held to a higher standard. Whether or not the neighborhood council uses documentation for voters, the candidate should document their stakeholder status so that we can be assured that that candidate is in fact a legitimate stakeholder and is eligible to run for that office. So that's two issues there. So I'm not sure...
And there's absolutely nothing about that process or how that is going to occur in the template, including what the timeline for that process is. We were trying to back into the timeline and then we found these gaps in the template that, so we could not do that. It talks about when you will tell, when you will say that, there's a date by which they will be certified, but there's nothing about how you're going to certify them and what that process is going to be and how long that process will take, so that you can back up to when do people have to submit, so you can back up from that to, at what date do we need to start telling people to gather candidates? Because getting candidates is not always easy in a neighborhood council election and it takes us, we have to work at it. And then, then we get overwhelmed with them, but we really have to work at it.
Well, the first step is determining your election day.
Right.
Which, which we will do in June. And then we will back into a candidate filing period and we will, you know, fill out these templates to put in those kind of actual dates and procedures and candidate documentation.
Right, so that everybody will know. Can you address the concern about the mass mailing and who exactly gets those? Because, I don't know, do you do DWP list or address or voter registration or?
Well...
What do you use?
Let's, let's also not romanticize walking man either as far as it's affected.
That's true. I've seen those guys leaving.
We actually use, we actually use both processes. We do a mailing and a walking man.
I've seen those guys in the alley dumping.
We, we actually do both. We do a mailing and a walking man.
Yeah, we're going to try to get an official city clerk mailing to every single mailing place, address in the entire neighborhood council. I mean, that's...
Businesses, churches, schools.
But beyond that, remember, part of this process is while we're doing these nuts and bolts of the elections, Dunn and the neighborhood councils are supposed to be out trying to publicize and stuff. And also, again, by having the regional dates, you have the opportunity to utilize the resources of all the city representatives in the area to try to, again, get that information out. And you're absolutely right, as far as candidates, we can't manufacture candidates for you and we can't do that. And that's, that is one of the real challenges here. But again, we just got through the, the general information meetings. We are now going to start meeting with the individual neighborhood councils and working with the individual groups of neighborhood councils that we have.
Are you giving them dates so that they know when this is happening or?
Well, again, we're, right now, this week, first week in Feb, first full week in February, not counting today because we're, we're busy supporting the county, but we're going to start making the calls. We got the team in place and we will start doing that and getting together with them and starting working through some of these issues. And I, I think that that will be important, of course, to lay out, you know, the candidate filing period, what kind of documentation is going to be required, what that process will be, how that will work. I think there can be a fair amount of standardization with some, it, I don't think it should, it will be so standardized that you can't have creative ways to get candidates and all that kind of stuff. The other thing we said in our report to the Neighborhood Council Review Commission is that we should be open to and, and look at different ways of doing elections through this experience and evolve over time.
And what about like the grassroots candidate forums? Does this, is this...
Does not preclude that from happening in the neighborhood council?
They can all still do that.
Should all, you know, I mean, that's part of participation building. We wouldn't restrict that or in any way negate that. The candidate statement issue is something we did talk about as well, as to how, how to make that work effectively. And should those, should we just, at the time of candidate filing, give everybody an opportunity to write their candidate statement and then we'll just produce those and have them available and put them up on the website, give them to the neighborhood councils and have them, you know, in connection with, you know, we have to look at electioneering versus the polling place, but, you know, we could figure something out there. So I don't see the, any of those as insurmountable or in, in conflict per se. I mean, these are things that we need to work out.
I mean, yeah, I mean, and it is, I mean, and I, I think what Diana's saying is really at the heart of, I think, this constant line that we're all walking, trying to bring some consistency, putting, you know, the roles and missions in the correct departments, but really trying in some way to preserve this very unique, creative grassroots element, which many of us feel is key to neighborhood councils' ultimate participation in government. If people don't feel like it's still at the grassroots level, that it's still unique, that it's, you know, that their voice is still able to be heard, then, yeah, people, it'll affect how people feel they're participating in government.
It starts feeling very politicized.
Right, wow.
I think that's a concern to us. We've worked really hard to try to be non-politicized in our council.
True, except all elections are political.
Well, yes, but...
By their very nature.
We've been very, you know, kind of low keyed about it intentionally. Not about having the election, but about how we electioneered.
Yeah.
And tried to keep it very low key. I am very concerned if you've got people, I mean, we would still go on record to oppose vote by mail. But if there is vote by mail, I think you've got to have the candidate statements, you've got to have something for them to be voting on, some kind of information, because you don't have TV advertising and you don't want to have TV advertising for neighborhood councils, I hope.
Someday, I bet we see that.
I think if you do vote by mail, you are, you're going to start causing, you're going to start, it's going to start costing to run for neighborhood councils and you're going to see a different dynamics in neighborhood councils.
Yeah.
Because people are going to have to have money and, you know, when you're going to get money, then you got to do this, so you got to do that. And I think it's going to change the nature of neighborhood councils. That's our concern.
Okay.
I might, I might mention that there are neighborhood councils whose primary, primary means of voting is vote by mail and have been doing it quite successfully. So it, but that's their area.
Right.
They do it a little differently.
Right.
I think if vote by mail's not been a major component of your election, I doubt it's going to suddenly, you know, flourish just because we offer the opportunity to a voter. But, but we have to put safeguards in place and, and we have to look for ways of getting the information out to the voters. This, you know, you've got voters that, you know, by their very nature are not in the area to receive mail, right?
True.
There are many stakeholders that have a status because they...
That's true.
They, they have some connection, but they're not living there.
Right.
Again, that's part of getting information out to the organizations in the area, utilizing the city resources to try to drum up awareness and participation.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, duly noted. Pat Knave.
Elections are at the heart of our democracy and the fact that they're political is one thing, the fact that they allow people to participate and have a voice in their governance is what gives it credibility and what gives it stability. So I think what we've got here is we're going to have a law of unintended consequences, it's going to happen. It almost always happens when government tells local people or the voting public what's good for them. I'll just be real frank about it. I think there's two consequences in particular that are going to happen out of this and they're just going to, just going to have a lot more people down here talking to you because of it. You know, in, in the neighborhood council in which I live and where I helped write the bylaws as part of a bylaws committee, we haven't had those problems, you haven't seen those people down here talking to you. So make it an opt-in system. If somebody wants to spend their money on this, whether than on betterment plans for Peck Park or for North Gaffey Street, fine, let them help out the operating budget of the city clerk and opt in. Or if somebody's in the sin bin because they really screwed up their elections, make them go to the city clerk and use them, but if they're not causing problems and they're getting more people. You know, two years ago, we had more people vote in our neighborhood council election than voted in the council manic election in the precincts in our area. We're not inactive. If you're going to have these things every two years, what you're going to end up with is either everybody getting elected at the same time, which is unstable, and I want to come back to that, or you're going to have them go for four-year terms and stagger the elections like the city council does, in which case you're going to have a hard time getting people to run because they're not going to want to commit for four years. It's hard to do. It's going to screw up your, your youth vote, your youth representative because they're going to age out. So getting back to instability and we all know in the room, you do and we do, what happened in, in your district, in the central and coastal areas, where they elect everybody at one, one time and somebody hires a bunch of buses and brings in a bunch of kids and votes on one, one thing, and it takes years for those neighborhood councils to come back. In Central, it was, it was labor coming in and they, they, you know, Central is just now coming back and becoming more stable. So when we wrote our bylaws, we made them two-year terms and cross, you know, and staggered the terms so that we could have some stability and credibility. When you're spending city money and when you get projects like Peck Park where you want to try to have some continuity and stability, then you want to have these things with some, some kind of reliability. Now, I don't know how you're going to do a mail-out type of thing. We live on a border where we share a lot of facilities with people who don't live in the city of Los Angeles. So we got a ruling last year that an organization that, that we have in town that has over 12,000 members was entitled to vote. A lot of those people don't live in the city of Los Angeles and they don't live in our council area. It's entirely possible that you could have 100% of the vote in the Northwest Neighborhood Council area be people who don't live in the city of Los Angeles, but yet get to come in and vote on spending city money. So, and I don't know, you're going to use a DWP list, you're not going to pick those people up, they don't live in the city of Los Angeles. You're going to use voter rolls in the city of Los Angeles, you're not going to pick them up. I'm talking about people that live in Bloomwood and those areas, plus people that live in RPV.
And what organization are they a member of?
Our Neighborhoods are one. You know that, that group.
Gee, you want to listen to them on one area, but you don't want to listen to them on other areas? Oh, you're so busted.
There's no utility. This is one of the, this is one of the paradox, oh, I want to listen to them all the time. Hey, there's, it's one of the paradoxes of the neighborhood council movement, that when we, when it started out, you had to be a defined geographic area. We had, we had the refinery that wanted to be in both our area and in Wilmington and Dunn said no, or the bonk said no, you got to be in a defined area. Well, what's the point? They don't have any borders when you talk about voters anymore. None. What's the point of having the unique input of a geographic area and the people that live in, in part of your area? You got to listen to them or you, you do listen to them, not everybody does, but, and, and the city, Bureau of Sanitation and DWP and everybody else is supposed to listen to them, but how do you know where they're coming from? What's the social utility? Well, what's the social utility in having these kinds of things when you're just going to decrease their utility? And if you mess up their stability and their continuity and so forth so that they're not strong and they have no history and on it, then what's good about that for the city?
I mean, that really goes to the heart of the definition of stakeholder, so, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, you've got to be a stakeholder to participate, whether you participate by mail or you participate by showing up and voting. You still, you have to be a stakeholder.
And really, and not where you live so much as what your stake is in that neighborhood.
That's correct. That's one issue. We have to honor stakeholder definition.
So somebody sends in an application, who's making the decision on whether they're a stakeholder?
We are.
Based on the criteria-
So the city clerk in downtown Los Angeles is going to decide whether they're a stakeholder in Northwest or in San Pedro?
Based on the definition given to us by your bylaws of what a stakeholder is.
Right.
And this is one of the other uniformities?
And that was, I mean, and that was the big issue, and I'm sure it was debated at length in the 9/12 commission. But as I recall, it was a unanimous decision to keep it, anyone who lives, works-
Owns property.
Owns property, plays, or-
Drives down Western Avenue.
Drives down Western Avenue, is stuck in traffic, has a stake in the area. And so, and that was, I mean, if that was the place to change it, that would have been the place to change it. And we debated that in 1997. They debated it in 2007. And as a result of what keeps coming out in terms of the definition of stakeholder, that's what the city clerk is, has to base there.
The fact that it was debated, it does not persuade me of anything. We debated the Iraq War for years. It doesn't make it right. Okay? And as far as I'm concerned, I'll just say it right out, I think this violates 904 after the charter. You know, you're supposed to, when we were doing, when you were doing the elected charter reform commission, I remember those debates, and I remember what, how they began to be implemented early on. But the idea of it was to have the neighborhoods make these kinds of things, as much self-governance as possible. And we've come down that continuum to now it sits downtown, and not only that, they're going to spend our money too. They're going to take 10% of our budget out. You know, we ran ours on a couple hundred bucks. He's going to take 5,000. What for? It's not doing us any good, not doing you any good in your neighborhood.
What do you have to say for yourself?
What do I have to say for me now? Why did I get into this?
Yeah.
First of all, the issue of staggered terms and term length, that was debated. We brought it up as an issue that needed to be considered, right?
Right.
City clerk didn't say, "We want to do this." We were asked to do it. We brought a program forward, and we said, "These are the issues you have to think about." And those are important issues. Staggered terms versus two-year terms versus four-year terms. So those are your issues. We will follow and honor the stakeholder definition, period. And whatever that is, we will honor that. And we are not naive as to the potential issues in neighborhood council elections. We have, myself personally, been involved in adjudicating disputes, and I know the kinds of things that can occur. We will work closely with the neighborhood councils as we put on these elections, and if we were faced with something like an unusual number of vote by mail ballots coming from somewhere, I mean, we would investigate that, as we do now in our other elections. So we're not naive. Legitimate points are being raised relative to staggered terms and four-year terms, and those we brought up and said, "This is something you have to grapple with because we're not available to do elections every year."
Right.
So, good points, but-
Yeah, good point. Okay.
Ray Sunnenshine, Neighborhood Council Review Commission.
Why don't you close this up for us?
I will. Just so the city clerk is sort of not out on his own here, the city clerk is implementing a decision that was made with great enthusiasm by a commission, a majority of whose members are members of neighborhood council boards with many, many years of experience, who believe this is the single most important recommendation we're going to make. And also, having worked with you on the previous charter process, there was nothing in what we did that said that every single process that emerged after neighborhood councils were created was sacrosanct in some way.
Right.
In fact, one of the things we wanted to separate out was the places where uniformity could actually cause real democracy to come out. And those two areas were elections, first of all.
Right.
And then, secondly, bylaws and a few other areas like that. There's nothing magical about all these things that developed since we created the charter. A number of them just developed. Some of it's creative, some of it's not. But the commission ended up with tremendous faith in what the city clerk should do, even knowing some things will be a hard change, and some neighborhood councils will feel they're doing better now than before, but the case for uniformity was absolutely overwhelming to our commission. So I just want to, for the record, make sure that that's out there.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, and again, I don't think anything that happens to neighborhood councils is, again, going to be something that we all can't take, continue to take a look at, continue to make it better. I don't think any of us would be shy about tweaking things or rethinking about some of the decisions that we're making from these recommendations. So, thank you. Good luck. And what were we doing with that?
Nope.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. We now have one more final public comment from, let's all say it together, Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, I don't want to rant on this parade. However, the city budget is in dire financial straits. The mayor supposedly is going to say, "Don't hire anybody else," period, this year. That may put a crimp on the city clerk, for example. But also, I do want to point out that the money that neighborhood councils get every year is generally not spent. I have suggested many, many times to Budget Finance Committee that they at least make a symbolic reduction in this so that people will realize that we do have budgetary problems and will take the time to look at the budget. I think that's the most important thing for neighborhood councils to get into. And last night, the CAO and the CLA both made a very strong presentation that said that things are going to get worse next year, much worse. Now, they haven't risen this year to the amount that I projected, but they're getting there, and we may end up approximately $400 million over budget this year. The actual receipts are way down, and the police, over time, has gone way high. And it's really causing a big dent in what we can do. We may have to close parks. We may have to cut out after-school programs. This is very, very serious, and I urge all neighborhood councils to get busy and look at things and try to figure out how we can do things more efficiently in the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this was a good meeting, excellent meeting. Thank you all, and this meeting is now adjourned. What?
Tuesday morning at 8:45.
Tuesday morning what?
The next meeting.
Oh, the next meeting is Tuesday morning, the 12th.
8:45.
8:45. See you there.
I'll be square.
Good night and good luck.
Great job.
Yeah, well, it was fun.
Very much. As usual.
I'm going to try to phone call and see.
Thank you. My pleasure.